I'd like to call to order the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October 11th, 2023. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You too? You're good? Okay. All right. Motion is carried. All right. Dr. Smith, you're up.
Yeah, so, October 10th, 11th, it is the, oh my gosh, it is the 11th.
It's Halloween.
Just a quick update, we've been going out and doing new teacher visits, Dr. Marr and Heather Husk and myself, talking to the, our most recent members of St. Mary's County Public Schools. And for the, at the elementary level, secondary level, we kind of gathered them together by, by school. So we'll go to Chopticon-Lenertown High School and, and Great Mills High School, and then we'll go to the middle schools. But for our elementary schools, we kind of grouped them together, our central, northern and southern elementary. So we'll pull all the teachers together and have a great conversation. And the questions we asked them are, what brought you to St. Mary's County Public Schools? And then, how are we doing so far? And what could we be doing a little bit better? Really interesting groups. What we're seeing before holds true, as I shared before, that people are usually coming to us. They are from St. Mary's County or the tri-county area, or they have some affiliation with somebody related to an industry and/or service on, on the base. What we, the most recent groups, we had several of our students who've graduated from, directly from Chopticon High School in particular. Chopticon High School is kind of like a powerhouse of, of producing people who are coming back to St. Mary's County Public Schools. We, just yesterday, we were speaking with a young lady who went through a TAM program, graduated, went away, and came, and has come back, class of 2019. We talked with one of our, one of our people who is returning to us, who graduated from Lenertown in 2006, and she was remembering her principal at the time, who handed her, her diploma, and that would have been a much younger, more brown-haired Scott. It was great. It was great. And they, they're all talking about that, and people coming back to St. Mary's, that have left and gone to other states, for a whole host of reasons, they're coming back to St. Mary's County. And when they come back to St. Mary's County, what they are saying consistently is, the culture, the climate, the new teacher seminar organization and structure, it feels, it feels very welcoming. And that's important because there are certainly so many things that are going on in the lives of a teacher new to teaching, a teacher who might be conditional, and even a veteran teacher, when you go into a new system, it might be all similar processes, but it's brand-new software and brand-new procedures and things such as that. So it's, it's been really good. They, they definitely have spoken about the, the need for ongoing support throughout the year, their desire to have time to really kind of sandbox and work with new programs and to discover things together. So we'll be building in all of that. Technology supports is a, is a huge piece. There are so many pieces of technology in a classroom. We got, we went down a rabbit hole, talking about the, whether or not you, and you're in an elementary school, and you have a smart board with a mini behind it, or whether or not the smart board is a direct input device, whether they're running Chrome as the software package or Chromium. And when you use Chromium, there are some features for, for, for extensions that are, I mean, these, it is, when you think of a teacher, I don't think people necessarily think about what technologists they need to be to actually put together a 21st century classroom and deliver instruction to children. It is, you know, many people might be able to navigate all of that stuff, but they don't do it in front of 25 nine-year-olds. They're doing all that in front of 25 nine-year-olds.
Who might know more than they do.
Right, who, right, who may come in and be like, and, and or know how to take things down the wrong way, you know? It, it was really good. And then, of course, we've been talking about all their pets and dogs, and you'll be happy to know that there are, we talked to two different people, one, one person that owns a racehorse and another person who raises horses. So there's, there's a lot. And fainting goats, we're going to see if we can try to get in some fainting goats before the end of the year to come in and spend some time with their new teachers. A lot of fun stuff, great stuff. Last week, we had our very first meeting for SLAC.
Yeah, we did.
And it was great. That, of course, is our gathering of representatives from Chopticon-Lenertown, Great Mills, and Fairlead Academy, representing 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. And we, the, the first session is really just kind of to get them comfortable with us, with one another. We have many who are returning, and one of the most fun things we did, and you'll see in the corner there, there's that little penguin from Toy Story. We went out and we bought a wide variety of little action figures, from Star Wars to trolls to Toy Story to pretty much, and we had laid out on a table about 150 of all these little things. And we started as an icebreaker to have each one of the kids come up and choose one of the little figures to kind of, to be their totem, to reflect who they are or to be the icebreaker for who they are. And so, Lillian, you brought, did you bring your totem?
I did. I brought my little Capybara from Encanto.
Capybara from Encanto. And why did you choose the Capybara from Encanto?
I feel like the Capybara is a hard worker. So am I. And, you know, it's just pretty cute, so I couldn't resist, couldn't resist. I love that movie.
Oh, absolutely. So, so everybody went around the room. So, of course, I had my, this is the, the character from Inside Out, representing what emotion?
Anger.
Anger. But he doesn't have the little flames on top of his head. This is anger in check, and that's what I always try to be, is anger in check. We had, I mean, we had a lot, we had a lot of fun with it, and I think it was a great way to have everybody introduce themselves. And they're going to bring their totems back throughout the year. We'll be talking about them. And at the end of the year, we're going to do a little reflection to see whether or not the totem they selected at the beginning of the year would be the totem that they would select at the end of the year. Now, Dr. Montgomery was not able to join us because she's a deputy superintendent, and she was deputy superintendent-ing, making sure everything was going forward, but we all got together and we did pick out a totem for her. And it's, it's a, it's a beautiful little, it's a troll doll, and it's got lovely hair. And, I mean, most of the time, her hair's like this, but yeah. So this is, this is her totem, and she'll be using this till the end of the year. And at the end of the year, we'll see if maybe there's a totem that works best for her. So when you think of the school system, you know, we're being well-led by anger in check. And I don't remember, what, what, do you know what the name of this one is?
I don't remember. I feel like it starts with a P, like Poppy?
Yeah, maybe that's Poppy. I don't know. We're going to have to go back and do some, and do some, do some research. So if you walk into our office, you'll see these on our desks, and that will be the explanation behind it. But it was a, it was a, it was a great start. And I have to say thank you very much to Dr. Jaffers, to Cheryl Long, to Robin Schrader, to Charles Eible and Lisa Bachner, who led table discussions with all of the students about just things that are going on socially, emotionally, safety-wise, academically-wise, and facility-wise. And they took copious notes and are coming back around and, and talking about all of that, hearing directly from the students themselves. So it was a great first SLAC. It, it, for me, that's the, it's, it's the highlight of each quarter, gathering together this great group of student leaders. They then go back to their schools, they meet with their principals as part of their principals advisory committee, and we, we move forward. We introduced CARE, and we'll talk a little bit more with that. And ultimately, I'll be handing that off to our good student member of the board to, to talk about, about how those presentations went. So, we talked about our teachers that have joined us, we talked about our incredible kids. We are running out of opportunities. We're running, we will sooner, sooner, we're, all the vacancies will be filled, and then you will have missed out. So we are still looking for one business, education. We still have three opportunities for elementary education, one for secondary English. Who would, who doesn't want to be a high school, middle school English teacher? Come on. Three science, two math, instructional resource, counselor, psychologist, social worker, special education, speech pathologist, and across our support network, particularly accountants, building service workers, bus drivers, food, career, college career liaison, food service, teacher apprentice, media clerk, parent educator, safety assistants, secretaries, and we always, always, always need substitutes. And what we did find in talking to our new teachers is so many of our new teachers come into the system, and they, they're testing the waters by being substitutes first. So they're getting a lay of the land, kind of understanding how the schools operate, getting to see each one of the schools as they sub in the classrooms. And then they ultimately then apply for pair educator positions, and then they roll that up into being teachers. We've had multiple people who have found their way to the front of the classroom and want, that's exactly how we build, I think, some of the very best teachers, are the teachers who come into the system like that. So join our team, hit the big red button. October, we're already in October. We are now in the second marking period. So we've already put one, right? No?
We're almost there.
We're almost two. It's at the end. I'm sorry. We are closing out the first marking period. I was thinking of November. My head. I don't know. We have a, so we are really putting together a lot of great things. We have the Teacher of the Year Celebration for Ms. Alicia Swan this Friday. This is the first time we've had the Teacher of the Year Celebration that's come back since before the pandemic. We are really looking forward to an evening celebrating the best educators from across the state of Maryland. There was a full-page ad in the Baltimore Sun as well, with a highlight and picture of every single one of the teachers. That's really great. It's good to see. Two-hour early release next Friday on the 20th, next, next Friday on the 20th, and then on the 27th, we finish the first marking period, and the first quarter is then in the banks. So with that, Ms. Lillian Kipler.
Yes, thank you. So, good morning, everyone. I hope that you all had a wonderful virtual Monday. That was a pretty great day, and I hope you're also having a great day so far today. So for my report, it's finally time for us to start jumping into our school visit recaps. I have to say that these visits have become the highlight of my day. So so far, we visited Benjamin Banneker, Duke, and Dynard, which is not Dynard.
It's not Dynard.
Not Dynard, as they so graciously corrected me.
Oh, they were so funny. They were so funny. They were, they were, yeah.
Okay, so it's Dynard. Got it. And so far, all of the fifth graders have been like so engaged and so reciprocating and so funny. And I was just astounded by how quick and witty they all are. So to each of my fifth-grade friends that I've made so far and who are watching right now, I know that all of your middle schools, next year, we'll be very lucky to have you. So thank you, guys, for letting us come into your schools. But also, a big thank you to all of the teachers and principals and front office workers from each of the schools we visited. They were all impossibly welcoming and really accommodating, allowing us to steal their fifth graders out of their classes. So thank you, guys, so much for letting us do this. So to start, the first school we visited was Benjamin Banneker, and they got our prototype presentation, and they absolutely set the bar so high for us. We talked about what SMTPS CARE means and what it looks like at Benjamin Banneker, and this is what they said. They said, let's see, that they are connected through clubs to include art club, kindness club, and walking club. Walking club is where they get together and do like walk-in talks to catch up with one another. They're also really connected through their activities, like theater and Battle of the Books, which is this really cool, like, across-the-county book club that I totally would have done if I had been here in fifth grade. They also do math team, science team, chorus, band, and strings. And overall, they're just really connected through their friends and their community, which is awesome. And so they are accountable because they have the three Rs, which stands for respect, responsibility, and being ready to learn. And that helps them maintain their attendance, do their homework, stay on task, and perform active listening, which is all very important things. They're super resilient because they have recovery and second chances offered to them if they're ever struggling. And they are all about supporting each other and encouraging them to try again. So that's how they stay resilient. And they are super excited to learn because they have lots of clubs and activities, although they did say that they don't have a dinosaur club and that they would like one.
Yeah, they like to have a, they like to have a dinosaur club.
Because that's pretty tragic.
Yeah.
And then they also love all of their after-school events that they do, and they love their field trips to Elm, Soderly, and the aquarium. And they also do STEM labs for all their lessons, and they love their labs. They do like a water purification lab, and they even launch rockets. So NASA could take some notes because they're killing it, going above and beyond in STEM labs at Benjamin Banneker. And they're really excited to learn because they have amazing teachers. And I have to say that the competition for the most amazing teachers is really tight because everyone said that they have the most amazing teachers, so I don't know who to believe because they all seem really fantastic. So it's tough. But that was Benjamin Banneker. They also did say that they wished that their basketball courts could be repainted, but overall, which is very important, very important. So overall, they had a, they did a great job. That was a great start. And the next one we had was Duke. So Duke, their mascot are the pilots, which I think is so, oh, aviators, yes. The aviators, which is so cool. My dad's a pilot, so I love that. They are like closely tied with the Dynard Dragons. Like, those are awesome mascots right there.
Yes.
But so the students from Duke are really connected because they have speakers from across the world to come in and help them expand their horizons. But they also have a school news broadcast that keeps them really informed about things going on in their community. So they're super empathetic about things going on right next to them. And then they also have so many activities and clubs, like, they had the most, like, the biggest variety. They have robotics Booster-Thon, which is like a fundraiser program that they do. They also have math team and running club. And they're also really accountable because what that means to them is being ready to learn and never slacking off, no matter what.
No slacking off.
No slacking off at all. And they have this other mantra called SOAR because they're the pilots and the aviators, so they soar. And that stands for service, ownership, accountability, and respect. So they're honestly halfway there with CARE because they have accountability and we have accountability, so we're all on the same page. That's fantastic. And for them, being resilient is about embracing the idea of never giving up and never quitting, which is an awesome life lesson there from the students of Duke. And they also have recovery and retry opportunities, and they help support each other when they go through that. And so the students of Duke are really excited to learn about all of their amazing clubs that they have. They have fossil club, which is awesome, Good News Club, which I think the whole world could have, and Geography Club. They also take awesome field trips, and they have awesome specials and special teachers. And they were especially excited about turning their principal into a banana split.
Principal Quartercracks is a good, she's a good egg.
He's a good egg.
She goes along with it, yes.
That's pretty exciting. So it keeps them pretty engaged at school. So that's awesome. All right. And then we have Dynard. So the Dynard Dragons, also pretty awesome. Let's see. So they are super, hang on, let's see. They're super connected through their clubs. So robotics, math, and Battle of the Books again. They're also connected through their specials, so chorus, band, strings, theater, bells. And they put, they work really hard to put on concerts and plays, so they highly suggest that you come and see all of their concerts and plays because they work so hard. That's what keeps them connected.
You got a lot of invitations to a lot of concerts and plays.
We're going to be pretty busy.
Our dance card shall be full.
Yes, yes. And for them, they are accountable for their work and attendance because they have a token economy for dojo points. And you get dojo points by upholding flame, and flame is about focus, leadership, attendance, manners, and excellence. And so the more you uphold flame, the more dojo points you get. But if you're not upholding flame, you might lose recess, which you don't want to do.
Right. Recess is very important.
Yeah, got to uphold flame. And they're super resilient because they cheer on their friends, they support them when they don't succeed, and they never give up, especially when things get difficult. All right. And then the students of Dynard are really excited to learn about their labs as well. They're also like mad scientists. And they also have the MCAT picnic, which is this big event that they hold around MCAT testing time to incentivize awesome performances and help them get through that hectic time. And then they also have the birthday announcement and birthday ribbons. So on your special day, you get to live it up, rock in a ribbon so everyone knows it's your birthday. And then, like, the big finale here is the golden trash can. So on the next slide, we have a picture of the golden trash can, and it was honestly a big honor to be in the presence of the golden trash can.
Right.
It is awarded to the class that keeps their room the cleanest. And so that's really awesome. It keeps them accountable for being, for the cleanliness of their classroom, and it keeps them excited for all that friendly competition class to class.
And it hadn't been awarded yet, so it hadn't been awarded for this year, so it is an unawarded golden trash can.
It's still up for grabs, and the competition is tight because it was pretty clean when we went in there, so they, they're doing a good job.
They were doing a beautiful job so far.
And then we have over here, we have Chris and Oliver wearing her birthday ribbon, so clearly she's pretty excited about that because it was her birthday. So the students of Dynard did say that they wished that all of their lunches and recesses could be held together so that they could be even more connected because right now they're separated, like, from their classes, but they're still pretty connected overall. But yeah. So those were all the schools that we visited so far, and all in all, we had a great time. I can't wait for our next one, which is actually today, at Carver.
We're going to Carver today. We're going to Green Holly tomorrow. Yes.
The next meeting, you'll be hearing all about that. So, yeah, it's good stuff.
Fantas, and it's, and honestly, it's, it's a lot of fun. It just reinforces the incredible work that's going on in each one of our schools and how well-prepared our young people are for the next stage. Because when we're talking to fifth graders, we're doing it because they, first of all, they, so many of them have been at the schools from kindergarten all the way up through fifth grade, or from pre-K all the way up through fifth grade. So some of them have been in those schools for seven years. So talk about a strong, stable foundation. And touching on a little bit about like what, what it means next year as they rise into middle school. So it's all very good stuff. So lovely and wonderful. Thank you.
All right. We will continue with Mr. Thompson somewhere for National School Bus Safety Week coming up.
Jeff, you can click from up there. Click him.
I have, oh, we get, we have dueling clickers.
Ken and Anthony Buhman, come on, too. Is that the worker? All right. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, I'm here to recognize the outstanding service that's provided to our students of St. Mary's County Public Schools by their school bus drivers and school bus attendants. The week of October 16th to 20th of 2023 is recognized as National School Bus Safety Week. And this is the National School Bus Safety Week poster. The theme this year is driving safely into the future. And then here, the week of October 16th to October 20th is also recognized, will recognize it as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week here in St. Mary's County Public Schools. Joining me today are three of our great staff members that work in the school bus pupil transportation field. First, we have Alvin Shade, who drives bus 566, Lenertown High School and Lenertown Elementary. And Mr. Shade also serves as a building service worker in the system. So he's kind of doing double duty, helping our system as much as he can. He's been with us since 2012, certified, so for quite a while. Next, we have Ms. Kimberly Oliver. She drives bus 280, which services Lenertown High School, Banneker, and Pony Point Elementary School. And that's a lift bus helping a lot of our special needs IEP students get to, to and from school each day. And on her bus serving also is Mr. Anthony Bateman, and he is a bus attendant. Serves on bus 280 with Ms. Oliver, and they do a fantastic job and are a fantastic team. Ms. Oliver's been with us since 2013, or 14? 13. And Mr. Bateman started with us in 2022. So they're a fantastic team. You know, all of us, at times, we only look at our world in our own little bubble and the things that are going on there. And it's only when we pause for a moment and take a big-picture look from the outside, they can kind of get perspective on how things are going. You know, looking outside of our bubble, we see the nationwide, there's a massive shortage of CDL drivers, and that includes school bus drivers nationwide. In our state, we have school systems nearby that run 200 drivers short every day. Kids are late to school every day, buses don't run, routes don't run every day. Earlier this year, we even saw a school system that flew in a high number of drivers from out of the state to try to just get school running the first days, and they still even had routes that did not run. However, here in St. Mary's County, because of our dedicated school bus drivers and school bus attendants, our routes are running every single day with relatively few delays and few hiccups. And it's only because of their outstanding dedication and service that we are able to do that. From a wide perspective, we definitely have one of the most stable systems in this state and probably in the nation. So with that, we have a proclamation that I would like the superintendent to read.
Sure. I brought my reading glasses and everything. I'm ready to go. All right.
I don't know if you want the big ones here.
Well, so we have, we have two, right?
Yes.
So the larger is from the state of Maryland. I'll read that first. Whereas Maryland Student Transportation Administrators and Operators remain diligent and committed to ensuring the safe transportation of nearly 700,000 students on a daily basis, and their efforts are critical to the operation and safety of our schools. And whereas all school bus drivers and attendants employed or contracted by local education agencies must achieve rigorous and specialized training as well as adhere to the highest standards of school bus safety. And whereas during the school year, these fleets cover millions of miles, operate in a variety of weather conditions, and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present challenges they face. And whereas Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing National School Bus Safety Week in all of our 23 counties, Baltimore City, and Seed School of Maryland, and recognize the school bus drivers and attendants who connect our children to their school communities and keep Maryland students safe every day. Now, therefore, Governor Wes Moore of the state of Maryland hereby proclaims October 16th through the 20th, 2023, as School Bus Safety Week in Maryland, and do commend this observance to all of our citizens. Let's have somebody hold that incredible proclamation. And from the state down here to St. Mary's County, whereas the week of October 16th through the 20th, 2023, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation. And whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program, and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance, now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the week of October 16th through the 20th, 2023, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize their school bus drivers and school bus attendants for safely transporting St. Mary's County Public School students to school each and every day, and signed by all members of the Board of this Education. So let's have you, I think you can hold that. And anybody want to say anything? No, you say everything, every single day, by getting our children to school and, very importantly, getting our students back home. Thank you very much for what you do every single day. Let's get a quick picture with everybody. Calvin, pushing together. Move over here, center here. Keep moving, keep moving. Perfect. Awesome. All right. Thank you so much.
Your dad's a military?
He did.
Do you want this? Uh, no.
I've got two planes.
All right.
I'll keep it to you.
I think we can bring it from the back.
Yeah.
Okay. So, we have no public hearing. Kim, do we have any public comment? Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda. Approval of minutes September 27th, 2023, personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, non. Request for commissioning contingency increase for the limited renovation at Lady Marshall Dent Elementary School. Purchase of phonics for reading and I-Ready Assessment Curriculum and Associates LLC.
Have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion is carried. And we switched it up this week a little bit, so we will begin with informational items. Mr. Chris Lehman with our audited financial statements for 2023.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Well, again, I'm Chris Lehman with SB and Company. I also have Renata Reese with me. We are your financial statement auditors. So what I have here is a brief presentation that'll go through our firm and industry required communications through the audit. If you have questions, please feel free to stop me as I go through this. So we were engaged to perform an audit of the June 30, 2023, financial statements for the school system. In addition, we do provide assistance with drafting the financial statements, which is considered a non-attest service, but that is a service allowable under professional standards, and that does not impair our independence as auditors. In addition, because of what's termed the single audit, or the CFR Part 200, we are required, or the school system's required to undergo an annual single audit of its federal funds. That audit has also been completed, and that's issued as one combined document with the financial statements and the single audit together. Just high-level results in the, the whole presentation really goes through results, but at a high level, we've issued a, what's termed an unmodified opinion. That's, that's a good opinion in kind of non, uh, non-accounting terms, but a, a clean opinion, and that's the best opinion we could give under professional standards. We did not discover any instances of fraud. A financial statement audit is not a forensic audit, but we are required to have a healthy skepticism that fraud could be perpetrated by anyone at any time. We discovered no material weaknesses in any of the internal controls that we've tested as part of the audit. I have a few slides coming up that'll highlight what we consider the significant processes that impact the financial statements. In addition, we received the full cooperation of management. So any records that we requested backup for, we obtained adequate support for those items. You know, had we had unsupported transactions, I'd be required to bring that to, to governance level. We had none of that. Any questions that we had, we obtained timely and adequate answers on all questions. Another impressive item, we had no single audit findings to... Another impressive item, we had no single audit findings to report within the single audit. I have a slide that'll highlight the major federal programs, but there's a risk-based assessment that we have to go through on an annual basis to identify what the major program requirements are for single audit. This slide here just shows a picture of our risk-based audit approach, and it really starts at the planning phase, but we spend a significant amount of time in planning, but also going through the understanding of the internal control structure and also testing those internal controls. Significant audit areas, I won't walk through every, you know, risk within the financial statement, but generally speaking, looking at the balance sheet, testing assets for existence from a liability perspective, looking for completeness of liabilities, testing revenue for revenue recognition, looking at expenses and making sure that those transactions have been properly incurred and booked to the correct account. Before we get to the key processes, we also use a, an assessment of the control environment, and there's five interrelated components that we look at in the organization's control environment. Across the top here, you'll see control environment. It's, then we look at management's risk assessment process. We look at the specific control activities of the organization. That could be approvals, that could be monitoring of certain controls. We look at information and communication, and then the monitoring activities that are performed. We've concluded that there was an effective environment for the period under audit. Questions so far? Okay. This gets into our evaluation of key processes. It'll go for a couple of slides. But you'll see across the top, looking at treasury as far as the, the risk with bank reconciliations and making sure those are done timely and accurately. There are certain estimates within the financial statements, predominantly around OPEB and pension expense that's recognized. OPEB and pension liabilities that are recognized within the financial statements. Useful lives of fixed assets and how long those are being depreciated for is another example of an estimate. We look at the financial reporting process and how timely management closes the books. As you're probably well aware, there is an aggressive deadline that has to be met of September 30th. So the timeliness of closing the books and the accuracy of us getting good reliable information, you know, is important to be able to complete that deadline. Looking at the revenue cycle, and then furthermore, looking at dispersments and expenditures that occur throughout the period. Of course, payroll being a significant process. And also highlight, through our single audit, a lot of the single audit is testing for dispersments and allowability of transactions being charged to that grant. So the expenditure and the payroll process also gets significant, um, significant review in the single audit perspective as well. Also, looking at fixed assets, timeliness of closing out construction and progress and placing assets into service. And then also with the grant compliance aspect I mentioned, which also significantly drives the expenditure and payroll process. But there's additional things we have to do from a grant compliance perspective. Depending on what the major program is, some major programs require eligibility checks, procurement rules, other reporting items, but at a minimum for every grant, we are looking at the, of course, the spending is driving a lot of the compliance testing from that perspective.
Question?
Yes.
Do you have it bottom of each column, effective? What do you mean by that?
That based on our observation of how the process is designed, as well as through our testing and concluding on the operating results of the transactions being proper, that it's effective from both a design and an operating perspective.
Is there anything?
We normally put effective or non-effective, so there's not much of a.
It's kind of binary.
There's not much of a spectrum of, like, it could have been better than effective, so. Normally, if we had non-effective here, I would have started with saying there was some sort of material weakness or significant deficiency. Or if we had an audit adjustment, normally if you have one of those three items, that's some sort of function of a breakdown in a process that's happened. So here, you know, hearing at the end of the audit that, you know, there was no material weaknesses, there were no significant deficiencies, that's as a result of the testing of these key processes. And then here, I won't read through each key account, but these are, you know, primarily the, the material or significant accounts that are within the financial statement and the audit assertion that we're testing for. And like I said, generally speaking, an asset, we want to make sure it exists. You know, if it's cash, is it actually in the bank? If it's a liability, we test for activity that's happened after June 30th, you know, subsequent payments that have been made. If those services have been rendered prior to June, making sure that that invoice or that expenditure gets accrued within the proper period. You know, cutoff at year end is a, gets a high level of focus to make sure all the activity gets recorded within the correct fiscal year. And of course, with the, the pension liability that's, that's booked, the net OPEB liability that's booked on the entity-wide financial statements, looking at actuarial assumptions and calculations is also a significant part of the audit process as well. And then, excuse me, from a revenue and a expense perspective, just making sure those transactions have occurred and that the transactions are recorded in the correct accounts. I have some just selective financial statement highlights. Of course, there's a lot more detail in your audit report, which I won't go through any detail there unless there's any questions or deep dives that it, that anyone.
What's that?
Will we get that report today?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And we have copies as well, so we have some light reading for you to, to take home as well. If you look at, from a budgetary perspective, you know, looking, and this is just the unrestricted budget. Here, you'll see within the financial statements, there's additional budgetary data that also includes restricted funds and unrestricted funds. But from an unrestricted perspective, on a revenue side, the actual budgetary basis revenue came in at 258 million against a budget of 254 million for the year. On the expenditure side, the budgetary basis of expenditures was at 248 million, and that was against a final amended budget of 254 million. So on a budgetary basis, that left a positive change in fund balance of 9.2 million. That budgetary basis does get reconciled to your GAAP basis financial statements. There's a GAAP basis adjustment that decreases that, that change by $4 million. So on a GAAP basis, you'll see that the general fund had a positive $5.1 million change in fund balance. The, the major difference in that reconciling item in your budget, the budgeted use of fund balance is a revenue in your budget. So basically, planning to use prior year fund balance. But for GAAP, using fund balance isn't a revenue because it's not an externally generated revenue stream. It's, it's a use of fund balance. That, that's, that's the primary driver of that decrease that you see there. And that's also noted within the financial statements as well. Here, and again, the statements that we issue are on a, on a single-year basis. But just to give you a little bit of trend of the general fund, fund balance, you'll see that the total fund balance at the end of 2023 has increased over the prior year, 2022. So all in, or the total fund balance is at just about 19.2 million dollars at the end of 2023. There are certain categories that fund balance can be broken into that GAAP, that authoritative standards kind of set the guidance on different categories. But you'll see most of the categories of fund balances in the assigned category. And what the assigned category really is the school system's intent of how it's going to use that fund balance in the future. And you'll see that that's at 14, 14.9 million dollars worth of the fund balance has been accounted for, for anticipated uses in the future. And you'll see those disclosed here, as well as that's included within the, it's a footnote also within the financial statement.
And before we leave this page, this is, this same page is part of the, the action item that's coming before you to talk about the 4.2 million dollars of unassigned fund balance that we have. And I'd like to get this very clear in the event that we're going to be putting something in the newspaper about the school system has a 19 million dollar fund balance. Yes and no? It's important to understand that if it's an assigned fund balance, that means it has a purpose, it has a goal, we have a plan. We're setting it aside for a reason. Unassigned means we haven't determined how to spend that money yet. By the time we get to the end of the day today, we hope to have no unassigned fund balance, which means every dollar that is under our control is used to a purpose. So we'll come back and we'll be talking about that, but before we leave this, I don't, I don't want there to be some speculation that there's 19 million dollars that we can just, woo-hoo! It's, 15 million of it is already allocated for a purpose, and we're going to be talking about the leftover 4.2, what we plan to do with it before we end this day's meeting.
For, for 2024?
For this year. Yep.
Correct. Okay.
Any other observations or questions there? All right. Just, and then again, quickly on the single audit, we do a risk-based assessment of the major programs. There's different, of course, funding sources that come in for various programs. For the year, so we looked at the child nutrition cluster, there was some American Rescue Plan. There's still CARES money kind of flowing through organizations being spent. So there's some American Rescue Plan money, so there's some ESER, of course, well, some ESER, there's significant ESER funding that also is required to be audited. Head Start cluster also was determined to be a major program for the fiscal year. So in total, we've covered 20, 25 million dollars worth of program expenses have been subject to audit against a total federal expenditure within your single audit report of 37 million, which gives the school system 60, 68% of its programs from an expenditure perspective have been audited, which is well above the minimum required threshold of 20. Cause of that is because a lot of the COVID and CARES money that's come out over the past few years, the, the feds have labeled those as higher risk, which means we have to audit those every year. The number of higher-risk programs have increased since COVID, that we have to look at those annually. If it's not deemed a higher risk, there's a rotation that we can implement that it gets audited, not necessarily every year, but on a three-year window. Non, non-default high-risk programs get picked up in, in a three-year cycle. So you'll see that there's, there's well above adequate percentage there, but that's because of how the, the programs that were required to be audited shook out. From there, and I'm not going to read through the rest of this, this does cover a lot of the things that I have already talked through this morning. If we had, you know, really if we had any issues getting through the audit, if we had disagreements with management, if there were, you know, very aggressive accounting policies taken or barely acceptable, if we had found fraud or material weaknesses or anything like that, I'd be required to bring that to your attention. The idea being, we could, we could issue a clean opinion, but I've had lots of problems to get there. And if you just read the opinion and you, we didn't tell you these other things, it could give a false sense of security. But really, there's nothing negative, nothing of a negative nature I need to bring to your attention through the audit process. So it's probably about as clean as it can get, or as easy as it can get, you know, working with management. Like I said, getting good, solid numbers in time to, to get the audit done and make the deadline. And I was, on the way here, I was thinking, I think you're the first June 30 client where your single audit is also done and issued with your financial statements. So I think you're the, probably the first client we have that both have been done simultaneously. I have a lot of clients that, it takes a lot of effort just to get the financial statement audit done, and then we kind of go back to the single audit, take a deep breath that the financial statements are done, go back to the single audit, but we've got it all done in one shot. So I think that's also a testament to having the focus and, and the attention to getting both, both done by September 30th.
And, and that would be, I would attribute that to Tammy McCourt, who's absolutely wonderful, but also, Ms. Christine Jewett in the back, the supervisor of accounting and auditing, making sure that all of, that we pull, that we work and have all of this available in a really timely fashion. It's a, it's all correct, but it's also exceptionally efficiently and timely pulled together. So thank you very much, Ms. Jewett, for all of the work that you do evenings, weekends, all of it. Thank you.
Yep. And I do, we do have our contact information here. That way, if, if any of you have questions, you know, outside audit season, we make ourselves available. And I think one thing that does help us, if there are questions, you know, Tammy or Christine reaches out to us. We deal with them when they're fresh in your mind, not where you feel like you have to wait and make a bad decision, and then we come out and audit the decision and say, well, why did you do that? We wouldn't, we wouldn't have agreed with that. So I think just having the open lines of communication also kind of helps make a smooth audit process.
Where there are some cases where people make a decision and then ask for forgiveness afterwards. That is never the case in our accounting department. It is always triple-check before you act and make sure that you are absolutely appropriately acting and in complete compliance. Makes us sleep well at night. For all the things that keep us up? This is not one of them. So, thank you.
Yeah. So thank you very much, and thank you to Tammy and Christine and the whole staff, I think.
The entire staff.
With the, with the volume of funding that has been restricted and tagged over the past three years that has come in, and I'm, I know it has stretched the general ledger capabilities to the absolute max. You know, to have no audit results on that or on, you know, on the, on the restricted funding side is, is just incredible. So, you know, hats off, as I say every year, to everyone up in finance. And for Tammy's iron fist in making sure that we are following all of the rules.
Tammy always makes sure that the best version of herself is always present.
Yes. So, yeah, I mean, in this day and age, when you, when you see the other, you know, reports coming out of, you know, audits, whether it's company, government, or whatever, to have a completely clean audit report year after year after year is unheard of. So just fantastic.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else?
That's all I've got.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. So Tammy, you can just continue with our financial reports, with our September financial report.
Good morning. So we'll move right into FY '24. Before you is the September month-end financial report of the 280.6 million dollar budget. We've received revenues to date of 116.6 million dollars, representing 41.56% of the budget. And on the expenditure side, we have encumbrances outstanding of 208.9 million dollars, which is substantially associated with salary encumbrances. Encumbrances and expenses to date, 248.7 million dollars, and available balance of 31.8 million dollars. Are there any questions? There are no areas of concern at this point?
Anyone?
No questions for me.
No questions.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now we have a blueprint presentation. Dr. Marr. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, good morning.
Morning, sir.
I'm back to share some information about a blueprint, but actually to specifically share some information about how we're going to seek input from our stakeholders and members of our, of our school communities. So just to sort of back everybody up, you know that we've had, and we've been working on implementation of the blueprint for the last couple of years. We had steering committee meetings that met throughout '21 and '22, and '22 and '23. And last year in March, we put forth our blueprint plan, Part One. Part Two is actually due this March, and so that's the purpose of these, these sessions to gather some. to gather some input. And of course, we've had blueprint reporting that's been ongoing, and I'll have a little summary of that in just a minute. To remind our community, if you go to smcps.org/blueprint, if you go to the front page of our website, there's a link directly to it, and it'll take you to a site that has all of the information, including the full blueprint plan that we have presented and was approved by the AIB in, in, over the summer. There are five, just to remind our community and the board, there are five pillars that put forth the expectations of the blueprint. The first is around early childhood, second, teachers and leaders, third, college and career readiness, fourth, resources for students, resources for student success, and then finally, governance and accountability. I just want to walk through a couple of things. The, at the end of this presentation, we're going to share specific dates for town hall meetings that we're going to be hosting for each of the pillars. And as we go through it, we want to remind the community that we're not waiting until the town halls that, for the work to be done. Obviously, that plan has been developed over the last couple of years, so I just want to take a second and just share some of the highlights of what's been going on in each pillar area. They'll be expanded on further when we get to the town hall meetings. You all have had information sessions on just about all of them as well, so this is just meant as a high-level reminder of some of the initiatives. So for example, in early childhood, you know that we have about five hundred and eighty full-time spaces that are out there for our pre-K4 programs. Professional development is planned and ongoing, both for our pre-K staff as well as our private providers who are providing pre-K resources to our community, and there are parent and family engagement workshops that are going on throughout the year in our schools. For pillar two, there's been a lot of work as we work towards, I'll start at the bottom, working towards our career ladder implementation and working with our partners in the association. We also have a lot of staff who have been going through the national board certification program. That is a huge push in pillar two of the blueprint. We started out, and we've typically had about thirty-three to thirty-five staff members who are nationally board certified. We have about twenty-seven right now who hold it, but there's a number of them, I think about fifteen or so, that are going through recertification or retesting, and there's about ninety-seven who are going through the process right now. So there's, that number is expanding quite a bit, and we know that the blueprint provides salary enhancements for those staff who, who earn that certification. In addition, Dr. Smith talked about our supports for new teachers, that is also embedded in the blueprint, and we're, we're proud of the fact that we have a lot of work that already aligns with that, but we're working with our college partners too, to help our staff who do not have that full certification status to meet those requirements within the first couple of years of their service. Mentoring and demonstration classrooms are ongoing, as well as the apprentice program. So all of these are elements that build up those, that cadre of staff for our teacher and leader program. In addition, we've, this year, we launched the career advising program, that's a partnership with the tri-county council and the workforce development board. Those career advisors are in place and are doing a lot of work already with, we just got a report that over eight hundred students have already met with these career advisors in our secondary schools, in either classes, small groups, or individually. Additionally, you know of the work that we've done with dual enrollment and the number of students who take advantage of those courses with the College of Southern Maryland, as well as our SAT and AP opportunities that are, that are ongoing as well. Mrs. Bachner has already briefed you on our CCR seminar that is in place in our program of studies for our eleventh and twelfth grade students who have not met that CCR standard, so that's in place as well. And then additionally, one of the things that we're working on this year and into next is CCR tracking program that will allow us to see which students stay on track to meet that CCR standard, and, as well as connecting that with our Naviance program. And then finally, if we look at pillar four, one of the things that we'll talk about when we get to that one is the work that we're doing to provide additional resources and supports for students who need those, those extra scaffolds. So for example, in some of our schools, we have a parent engagement liaison that is bilingual that is working with our multilingual families to help them to stay connected and access the resources. The Concertation of Poverty Grant is in place, supporting our community school efforts at both Carver and Lexington Park. And the Carver Community School program includes staffing for social worker, instructional resource teacher, et cetera. And then also working with Lexington Park this year, who's going in the, through that first state phase of that process, conducting their needs assessment. So many, many resources that are in place. You'll hear more about it when we talk about it at the pillar four town hall. And then finally, while we're not having a town hall about this particular one, because this one really ties in closely with, well, what you've heard just a moment ago, that whole piece about accountability and making sure that every dollar lines up with the programs in place for the blueprint, as well as all the reports that are going forward to the state, both to MSDE, the AIB, and the General Assembly. You see a list of those reports that have already been submitted, and these are, many of them are annual, so just as we wrap up the data gathering for one, we're working on the next. And that, those reports represent several hundred pages of reports that have gone forward to, to, to the state. And again, as we get into the budget planning process, you're going to be hearing a lot about the work that needs to be done to implement the blueprint. So I teased it out a little bit. Now, just here's the open invitation to our community about the blueprint town halls. You're going to be seeing posted on our website and information through our schools about these town hall sessions. There will be four of them. The idea is to engage the community in this conversation about the elements in the blueprint, what's going on. So those few bullets that I, I highlighted just a moment ago will go into greater depth, will have a panel discussion with people who are actively involved in each one of those elements, and then allow for some breakout sessions and focus groups based on various topics under each one of the pillars. So here's the schedule. So the first one will be November 7th. We've talked a lot about early childhood, that's going to be the first one out of the gate. Each one of these will begin at 6:00 PM at the Forest Center. They will also be livestreamed on our website as well. So if you can't make it in person, you can certainly tune in and see the information that's presented, and then it'll be hosted on our YouTube channel for, as an archive. So the first is November 7th with the early childhood, then we're going out of order. We're going to go to pillar four next, resources to support student success. That'll be in December, December 5th. Tuesdays, excuse me, yeah, Tuesday, December 5th. Then we, after the winter break, when we come back, we'll have the first one in February of 2024 on college and career readiness, and then closing out the last one, March 12th. So that should allow us to get all four of these in before our next report, part two, is due to the state. So we're very excited about this. We hope that you all can join us, we hope our community can join us, and we look forward to the conversation.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Will it be a period during the town hall where the stakeholders may come and ask questions?
Yes.
Or submit question?
Yes, ma'am, actually, that's the purpose of that panel discussion. So we'll start with a presentation that'll give an overview of all of the things that are happening, then that panel discussion will allow for that opportunity for, for the, the people who are leading the work and involved in the work to answer direct questions. And then we know that sometimes those big room questions don't get everybody's specific questions answered, and that's part of why we go into the focus group discussions and those smaller table discussions, so that we can hear from people, but also have a little bit more of a dialogue with them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity for the citizens to give further input and to hear again about the four pillars, even though they are five. And I like the idea that it's going to be livestreamed, if you can't make it in person, and they will have an opportunity to ask questions during the breakout sessions and the panel discussion. So thanks again for what will be a wonderful opportunity for our citizens, students included as well, who want to come and find out what's happening with the blueprint. So thank you, Dr. Mar, for spearheading this and organizing this and making it accessible to the citizens and students.
Thank you. And thank, thanks to the entire team of, of folks who are working on it. It's, it's, this certainly is work that can't be done by one person at all. It is, every department is all hands on deck for this work, so.
Thank you.
It is, we are in the, we are in the business of education, and education must be open, upfront, transparent, and collaborative. So we continue to do what we have done for the last almost decade. So if, if anybody wants to engage and be involved, here, here, here are your opportunities to do so. Just like the, the financial audit that we just had, public school systems are held to the greatest account of any publicly funded organization. There's more information about us available anywhere. You can look at our audited financials, you can look at our budget, you can look at our spending, you can look at all of our data, you can look at our decision-making, you can look at all of our resources, you can look at what's available in any one of our libraries, all of that is public avail, publicly available and front-facing from our webpage. It is all there. So I strongly encourage everybody to do a little work if they have an interest before they make a comment, the information is there. And certainly, if you reach out to us and ask us a question, we will direct you to where that information is available, but you must ask the question. So with that, I look forward to these town halls, I think they're going to be great. And most importantly, you're really going to hear from the people doing the work and the success of the, of the things that we've already put in place and the plan for further success to be built off of that. It really is, we've been doing some really, really good work. Thank you.
All right. Let's see. Action items? Thank you, Dr. Mar. We have Ms. McCourt back.
Let's talk about that fund balance, because we have.
Money, blueprint, back to money.
Well, we have the one thing that we cannot stand, unallocated money. If we have a dollar, we better be sping, talking about how we are going to spend it on behalf of children, or the people who are working with children, or the spaces in which the people are working with children. We are not in the business to hold other people's money.
So what we'll do is start with Mr. Lehman's presentation, whenever he had presented our fund balance. So we, we did in last fiscal year with nineteen point two million dollars, which included four point two million dollars of unassigned fund balance. And you'll see in the prior years, in FY '22 and FY '21, we also had unassigned fund balances, and those dollars were brought forward to the Board of Education and to the county commissioners immediately to, yeah, back to the classrooms. Just last year, the one point eight million dollars was used to support the Great Millers High School press box, that is scheduled to be done after the football season. We're waiting on the Board of Public Works approval of a matching grant of a hundred thousand dollars. We use funds to support the Green Holly and Greenview Knolls playgrounds, and we just completed the Chopticon High School gem floor embleters, as well as technology refresh. And in FY '21, those monies were put to use in all the schools, the high schools, for the turf fields. So of the four point two million dollars remaining from FY '23, we have before you a recommendation to put those monies back immediately to use. And that four point two million dollars represents one point seven percent of last year's budget of two hundred and fifty-two million dollars. So ninety-eight point three percent of last year's budget was, either has already been expensed on behalf of our staff and students, or was already re-appropriated in the current fiscal year's adopted budget. So then I'd like to drill down a little bit more on the assigned fund balance of fourteen point nine million dollars. Incorporated in that is one point nine million dollars of student activity funds. This was a new Gatsby pronouncement that required that we start recognizing as fiduciary agents on behalf of all the schools and students, the student activity funds in our financial statements. That number did not appear in the 2014 financial statements when Dr. Smith and I started in our current roles. These dollars are collected by the students, on behalf of the students, and do not contain any taxpayer dollars, but we are the fiduciary agents, so that is a new requirement.
So just so everyone's clear, so that would be at your high schools, that would be your booster clubs, that would be each of your classes and their fundraising efforts to go toward prom and graduation activities, or whatever they are. That's parking pass permits, that's at the schools, that's all of those things.
That's absolutely.
That are held within the school banks.
Right. So two million dollars of, of money is being held from last year over to the end of this year at all of our twenty-eight schools.
Correct.
Yep. They're local accounts. Oh, before you leave there, just, just so, before we leave there.
Yeah, go back to that for a second.
Go back.
And then the, the healthcare, the six point six is our healthcare call, because we are self-funded.
Right.
Health insurance agent.
Yep.
So if our claims exceed what our bills are, this is where we get the money from, because we don't go back to the, to the, to the staff and employees and say, hey, give us more money.
Right.
So, and what else do you have there, Scott?
So just, just, I want to go, so somebody says that, well, you have a fifteen million dollar fund balance, why don't you spend that? Because we can't, because it's already allocated, because two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars are for things that we purchased that haven't come in yet, who are just waiting for receipt of them. Six point six is the healthcare call, because we've got twenty-three hundred employees and we provide insurance and we're self-insured, and you have to have that money just in case. The two hundred and twenty, that's, it's a wellness restricted access for, for incentives that we do for our employees, so that we keep them as, as healthy and on track as we possibly can. Five hundred thousand dollars isn't ours, it's the Chesapeake Public Charter Schools fund balance that gets carried over. Two hundred and ninety-five is from the, the, the previous adopted budget from the Chesapeake Public Charter School that they're using in their budget. The four point one million dollars, or four million dollars is all of the money from the previous year that we rolled into this year that we, that we spent, so how we allocate our fund balance year over year. Five hundred thousand dollars for snow, five hundred thousand dollars for fuel. So it's fifteen million dollars, but it all is being held for a purpose. There's four point two that's not, and this is what we plan to do with it.
Well, before we go there, it is important to monitor our fund balance reserves, so we don't want to have too high of a level of reserve. Our current budget is two hundred and eighty point six million dollars. If we back out our planned use of fund balance in the current year, that's five million dollars, which leaves us a net amount of two hundred and seventy-five million dollars, which are our recurring cost, recurring revenue sources. Our fund balance of nineteen point two million dollars represents seven percent of our budget. If we back out of that nineteen point two million dollars, the planned use of fund balance of four point three million dollars, the SAF funds of one point nine million dollars, that leaves us with twelve point nine million dollars, representing four point seven percent of our budget. But the factors, and the Government Finance Officers Association, their minimal recommended reserve amount is sixteen point six percent of our budget, and that would be forty-five point seven million dollars, which doesn't make sense for SMCPS as a school district because of the risk factors that are identified for ours, our, our system. So the factors to consider for fund balance reserve are revenue stability, and our revenue stability is high, and expenditure volatility, and our expenditure volatility is low, therefore we are risk adverse, which means that there's no justification to maintain sixteen point six percent as a government finance officer's best practice as recommendation for us.
Right, because the only thing we're ever really going to be surprised on is going to be a healthcare call, healthcare goes over estimates, an inclement weather, where we have to, you know, go and remove a whole bunch of snow, or an unanticipated spike in fuel costs.
Which has happened.
Which has happened, or a catastrophic failure of a, of a, of a system at a, at a school. These are the only things that really will surprise us within a year, and so that's why we maintain resources, appropriate resources to be able to address that.
But not excessive.
But not excessive.
I have a question, just for clarification. So the reserve is not defined as surplus, even though it sits there, because it's for emergency situations only?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to check. Thank you.
Well, not even really, well, I mean, not even really emergency situations, because it's all allocated.
Right.
So, so we've, what the assigned categories are, are kind of what we determined would be emergency situations, like snow, fuel increases, things like that, so.
There's areas of expenditure volatility.
Right, exactly. So there's, there's nothing else, I mean, I think the, the last time there was a catastrophic event was the, was the fire at Spring Ridge Middle School. And then that was when we partnered with the county commissioners in order to.
Forward, to forward fund and move up a CIP project.
Right.
Which then ultimately did get reimbursed back by the state, so.
So it's considered allocated?
Yes.
Correct, yes.
So the fund balance of, unassigned fund balance of four point almost three million dollars was predominantly derived from salary savings, transportation savings, as well as an increase in our interest income above and beyond what we had originally budgeted. And this is how we plan on spending it. The recommendation is to put two million dollars towards our other post-employment The recommendation is to put two million dollars towards our other post-employment benefits, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards the concession stand and restroom at Leonardtown High School, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars towards school sidewalk repairs at Lady Marshall Dent Elementary School, White Marsh Elementary School, James A. Forrest Career Center, Leonardtown Elementary School, and Park Hall Elementary School. As well as forty-nine thousand dollars towards pointing and caulking at Lexington Park Elementary School, one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars towards the print shop modification, four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars towards technology refresh, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for classroom furniture at White Marsh Elementary School and Town Creek Elementary School, and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the doorway remodeling at Leonardtown High School. The budget amendment before you would require an increase to our revenues of four point almost three million dollars. Expenditure category amendment, two million dollars under the fixed charges category, four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars under materials and instruction, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar increase to the operations category, three hundred and one thousand dollar increase to maintenance category, and within capital outlay, two separate account lines, one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars towards the building remodel and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards CIP transfer. And then on the CIP fund, a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase as well. So then that would leave us, going back to the original nineteen million dollars, backing out what we already included in the current year's adopted budget of four point three million dollars, backing out the SAF balance of one point nine billion dollars. We're at twelve point nine million dollars to start, remove the four point three million dollars should you approve today's budget adjustment, leaves us at eight point six million dollars or three point one percent of the budget. And as we've already shared, that's a very deliberate and planned reserve of funds for the assigned purposes that we discussed of eight point six million dollars. Are there any questions?
I have no questions, thank you.
It just seemed to me that our report card's real good if you're saying, you know, our fund balance as a percentage of our total budget is so low.
Yeah.
Compared, I assume, to to other school districts, much, much higher. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I I don't know where the other school districts are.
Okay. Kudos.
Dorothy?
No other questions, thank you.
May.
I want to say we use our fund balance efficiently, effectively, and timely. One thing you mentioned was the playgrounds. I have seen the playground at Green Holly Elementary School and Greenview Knowles Elementary Schools, the playgrounds are beautiful. They are wonderful. And and I just see that the students will enjoy it and the teachers and everybody will enjoy those playgrounds. They are the best in the state of Maryland because we have a plan to make sure that our playgrounds are updated and they are conducive for the appropriate age group of the students and they really love it. At Greenview Knowles, there's even a little music session with a xylophone there and a mood section. You can say, how are you feeling today? And you can dial your mood and it's just wonderful. So I thank you and everybody who use it effectively to provide for our playgrounds for our students. And that is also a recruitment feature for our schools because when people come here, they look at our playgrounds and say, hey, they really value their students. They have nice playgrounds, they are safe, they are accommodating, and our buildings on the exterior and the interior are just great. So people who want to work in buildings like that and have things for their students that they can play and be safe. So, yeah, we continue to make the best use of the money that we have.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Okay. I move that the Board of Education approve the presented increase to the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four and approves a middle of this budget amendment to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval as required by the Annotated Code of Maryland.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Next up, we have the Comprehensive Maintenance Plan with Dr. Beavers.
How do I get it shared to the monitor? All right, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Ms. Washington, thank you for that segue. That was perfect.
I know, I think the same thing.
I really don't have to do anything now, I think, I can just wrap it up.
Clip through.
All right. So today I'm here to request approval of the twenty twenty-three Comprehensive Maintenance Plan for Educational Facilities. As you know, Tomar requires me to present this and for us to review it before it's uploaded to the state and to get your approval, so that is what I'm here today to do. Hopefully during my presentation, I will be able to articulate our vision, our organizational structure, our lines of responsibility, what we all do, the department's status and how we've been performing, to talk a little bit about how we decide what we're going to replace or renovate based on their conditions and then some budgetary conditions, our considerations. We are committed to supporting learning environment, right? Our job is to ensure safe, comfortable, and attractive and well-maintained facilities, right, for our staff and students and the community. So I know this is tough to see on this monitor, this is our overall organizational chart. I am happy to announce that we are fully staffed finally, and that's probably the first time in a long time with the exception of one part-time, four hundred and fifty-hour position. So we're in great shape as far as staff is concerned. So breaking our organizational chart down, this is our Building Trades Division led by our foreman, Mark Uncle. Our Building Trades, as you can see in the in the chart on the side, they're they are in charge of all of like roofing, lockers, moving, anything part of the physical building that's not mechanical, right? So you can see he leads, Mark Uncle leads, our team leaders, Gary Vanucci and Robert Morgan, and you can see the types of personnel that they're in charge of leading. So Gary Vanucci is, he's in charge of our roofers, our painters, our carpenters, and then Robert Morgan is on the grounds and logistics side. He oversees our cabinet maker, our locksmith. And of course, those are all the things that we're in charge of. It's important to note that our Building Trades Crew, they are also in charge of the graduation process, which if you've seen it, it's a pretty massive, it's a pretty massive undertaking. So they're involved in that. Some of our engineering trades are involved in that as well because there are some electric components that obviously have to be put in place for graduation as well. So they also do that. Another side of the house is our Engineering Trades Side. If you've ever had any HVAC or plumbing issues, you may have spoken with Warren Trossback. Warren is in charge of all the HVAC, plumbing, electric, those types of things. His team leaders include Timmy Wood, Joe Jones, Norman Lacy, and Billy Graves. Those are their responsibilities. All of those things in that chart on the right, that's Warren's side of the shop. It's also important to note that those are the folks who typically run our weekend and nighttime emergency calls. You know, we had a pretty rough winter last winter and a lot of those folks worked Christmas Eve and Christmas to try to keep our, keep our facilities in check and make sure they were ready for students when they came back from winter break. So kudos to those folks, they're hard workers and we couldn't couldn't do it without them. And then our other side is our Vehicle Maintenance. Now, we only have two folks on that side of the house, but the things that they have to do, just between the two of them, I've noted below, you know, we have a fleet of a hundred and seven vehicles, twenty-nine buses, twenty-seven emergency generators. Of course, they service all of the grounds equipment, snow removal equipment, et cetera. They do a lot of welding. A lot of times we get furniture, they weld furniture for classrooms just so we can get by another year or two. So they're in charge of all of that stuff, so that's a massive, massive undertaking for them. And they're all, that Mike Fox leads that department and of course, he's got the one mechanic. And then our our administrative and leadership team, you know, I'm sure you can imagine the volume that comes through the Maintenance Department is just astounding. So these are all the folks. I did keep the foreman because those are our, that's our direct links to all of our folks in the field. So that is our leadership and administrative team, hardworking, trying to keep up with the volume, trying to make sure everybody in the field has everything that they need to make sure that we're as efficient and effective as possible. So department status and performance, so this is the last decade. So as you can see from the from the chart here, work order, work order backlog, annual backlog has increased over the years. You'll notice that we've kind of, right around the fall of last year, we kind of started to grapple with looking at the data and trying to find out, you know, how much of the data that we're reporting is is accurate. We we found that there's a lot of work orders in the system that have either been completed or they're not a priority anymore. They've been held for a while, they're not a priority anymore for the school, the principals changed, whatever the case. So we started to process to purge some of that information because as you know, you know, if we're making predictions on data, the data needs to be as accurate as possible so that we can make make better decisions. So you'll see, that's why you see that trend at the end, that those numbers are starting to come down. And as of now, we're we're sitting around thirty, a little less than forty days, you know, currently. So we're we will continue that trend hopefully now that we're fully staffed, that should just help, help in that area. So the next slide is just broken down by actual number of work orders. So you can see, you know, at one point in the last three years, two years, we were as high as sixty-nine hundred work orders. So now we're talking about three thousand fifty-four, and that's about the same for today. So here's the budget. So the budget's broken down, same thing, last ten years. These are actual dollars, these are not dollar, this is, I've not taken into consider inflation or anything like that. So while it feels like there's a gradual increase in funding, our purchasing power hasn't been stable that whole time either, right? So so realizing that, so our budget, you know, we can do more contracted work with more funds, especially when you're, when you have positions that are unfilled, you know, you kind of have to rely on contracted work. So our budget is incredibly important. So here you go, you're looking at the square foot, per square foot budget, the total budget, and then of course, you see the tenure, you see the tenure trend. And you see the square footage of facilities has increased in the last ten years as well. So initiatives and accomplishments. So you've heard a lot about brightly, we're going to have to make that transition to brightly, this is going to be a great thing. It's going to uncover a lot of things, so this CMP presentation next year may look a lot different based on some of the information that we get out of that. One of our goals was to increase collaboration and transparency. Our our building foremen and team leaders are part of the conversation now. They're the guys in the field, they are the folks that know, so they're involved in the decision-making process more than they ever have. Collaboration with other divisions, talking about projects with design and construction, capital planning, Mike Watson, because he's in charge of all the athletic facilities, having that collaboration and making smarter decisions, you know, will obviously make us more efficient and effective. More customer service focused, efficient mobilization, we really do work hard to not have folks driving all over the place to get from one job to the other. We do try to strategically plan where they are for the day and keep them there. You know, encouraging them when a, when a, when building personnel ask you to do something, you know, they can put in a work order, but please, if it's something that you can knock out in thirty minutes, do it while you're there. It's going to be a work order anyway, so going back to accomplish that task really is inefficient and doesn't make sense. Really focus hard on staff morale, making sure people want to come to work, making sure they have everything that they need. Pre-IAC inspections, we've gotten really aggressive on pre-IAC inspections to make sure that our inspection results are good, if not excellent. There's a lot of work to be done in that area, but this process will surely, surely help us improve there. Worked hard on a widely shared, sortable project list, which in reviewing the CMP, you saw that in the appendix. Well, I wanted the ability to be able to look at our projects and then depending on who I'm talking to and what we're talking about, be able to sort by fiscal year, by site, by whatever the category is that that we're talking about, whether it be plumbing, electric, athletics, or whatever. I wanted to be able to sort all of our projects by whatever, you know, by whatever I was looking for. So you saw some of that in the CMP, that's that's become incredibly handy. We've we've done a lot of reorganizing in the department, which which I think has led to us being able to be fully staffed today. I think that will make us more efficient and effective as well. You all know, we added Joe Weissakinsky, who's been a huge asset already to our our department. I already mentioned we're fully staffed. At the time, we were almost fully staffed, now we are, with the exception of that one four hundred and fifty-hour position. And we have been able to acquire a lot of new equipment and vehicles that were desperately in need of replacement. So each year, we we fund, as you know, a lot of maintenance-related projects through the capital improvement system. In two thousand and twenty-three, here here, kind of the numbers, one million one hundred and sixty-seven in infrastructure. You also know, we have a critical, critical side as well, six hundred and ninety-one thousand there. And here are some of the projects that we did relative to that critical money. I won't, I won't read the list to you. I'm going to show you some pictures of some of this stuff later in the slideshow. But these are some of the projects that we were able to do with those critical funds. On the programmatic side, here are some of the projects that that we were able to do with the money on that side. I have, also have pictures of that. Playgrounds you mentioned, there are some playground pictures there. So we had twelve thousand seven hundred and forty-five other maintenance and facility support-related work orders in addition to, and here are just another list of some of the other things that we were able to do with budget support. There's a whole, there's two slides of list, and that doesn't include it all. And if you looked at the CMP project list, I did leave the FY twenty-three projects in there so that you could also see the the projects that were completed for FY twenty-three as well as any of the CIP projects that are not yet complete. You're all probably aware that, you know, a lot of our generators and HVAC parts have year-long lead times, and so those projects are still in the works. All right, so some of the, some of the projects that we've done, there is the Chopticon Gymnasium and bleachers, that turned out fantastic. Very happy with how that turned out. I think the only thing we're waiting on now are the wall pads. We replaced the skirt. I know volleyball players will be happy to know that we can get that divider all the way into the ceiling mount. Great Mills High School, again, they had a gymnasium floor refurbishment. They didn't have a complete replacement like Chopticon, but it looks brilliant. It's a Great Mills High School tennis courts, they, those were refurbished. Did a lot of paving. This is Dinerd Elementary School, paving, ceiling, and restriping at Dinerd. Green Holly Elementary School, we did some sidewalk repairs there. We installed a wrestling mat hoist at Leonardtown High School. Ridge Elementary, there's some flooring pictures relative to the renovation project there. Virtual Academy also had some new flooring. Greenview Knowles Elementary School, some more flooring. And then a lighting project at Oakville Elementary School. The Greenview Knowles Elementary School Playground, it did turn out really, really nice. Green Holly Elementary School Playground. Everybody wants to see this one. The Chopticon High School chiller, there it is, flying in. Maintenance replacement and renovation. So this is the, one of the life cycle charts that you see in the appendix of the CMP. This is what we use, this is part of the, how we keep track of what it is that we need to replace based on these life cycle charts. Now, we do have the flexibility, we're not going to replace, you know, just because it turns green and red, we're not going to replace it because it's at the end of its life cycle. There are, there are other inspections and components to making that decision. So we don't, I don't want you to think that when it shows up and it's overdue that we're just going to yank it out and replace it if it's in good, if it's in good condition.
Is R twenty-two available to you?
It's- It's, it's available. If you can find it, it's available at about three hundred bucks per pound.
I know it's expensive. I just wonder if there's availability.
It's insanely expensive. And, and most, most distributors will only sell it to you once. So you have to move on after that. So it's incredibly, it's, it's incredibly expensive. Yeah. This is an example of the sortable spreadsheet. That's also in the back of the, of the, the project list. It's in the back of your CMP. Basically, again, I've just designed it so that we can sort it and look at projects. So in having a conversation with Design and Construction, using this example here on the right, they were able to absorb a ninety-six-thousand-dollar Skylight replacement project in another job that they were doing. They had money left over from renovation, and they were able to take that on. So without the ability and having that open lines of communication and the ability to, to look at your needs all in one place, we probably wouldn't have picked that up and, and had done that project. So another, another piece of information that goes into the decision-making product, process, as you know, the IAC inspects our buildings, inspects our facilities each year. So we do take that data and the report that they give us. Of course, that outlines some of our, some of our components and systems and things that, that they don't feel like in their eyes are up to par. And then we use that in kind of adjusting the way we maintain and plan in the future. This is our preventive maintenance schedule. You probably can't see it very well. There is, it is in the appendix of your CMP as well. These are all of the, the different preventive maintenance tasks that we do on every system, whether it be daily, weekly, daily things are typically done by building service staff, obviously, who are, who can do that daily. And then weekly, monthly, quarterly, semi-annually, annually inspections as well. So those are all the systems that we, that we look at regularly. And then, obviously, we, we recommend and advise on renovation and replacement system needs and, and requirements. We make, we make recommendations to Ms. Howe and capital planning relative to, you know, we're in discussion all the time about her capital improvement plan and what we're asking for, and prioritizing where do we need to go next. We use the lifecycle charts, as I discussed, in addition to those inspections that, that I spoke about. They reflect of each other, right? Ms. Howe's plan and our plan, obviously, they're woven together because of the nature of what we do and the nature of the money that we need to do projects in the future. So back to the, the graph that you saw before, and thank you to everybody for your support. This is going to change dramatically, this has changed dramatically for us. You'll notice I add F, I added twenty-twenty-four to that graph. And I had said that I didn't take into consider, consideration inflation. And on that graph, this six dolly, this six dollars and forty cents, right, this six forty, six-point-four million, that takes us above the inflation rate. We weren't keeping up with the inflation rate before. This puts us over the top relative to the inflation rate. So we are greatly appreciative of that, and we'll be able to get a lot, a lot of things done with that additional funding. Budget considerations. So we, even though we're fully staffed, according to the APPA, and that's American Physical Plan Association, we're still a few short of what they recommend. Now, their numbers don't take into consideration the age of the facility either. And we have some, some pretty aging facilities. You, you may have saw on that slide before. I think they said the average age of our facilities was like twenty-seven point, I can't remember the exact number, years old. So as, as you know, with older facilities comes more work orders, comes, you know, more need for, for employees. So we're still four-point-six-eight, according to that chart, short. We still think we can make up some ground, having a fully staff, you know, having a full staff. Hopefully, we can consider, continue that. Of course, with four-point-six-eight more, we could kind of take another chunk out of the backlog. So we'll see what the future holds for us. And with that, I ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda as presented.
I just have a comment.
Sure.
So as a student who, like, lives in the building, like, twenty-four-seven practically, and sees the need for these work orders on the daily, it's so nice to see kind of the behind the scenes of how you prioritize, what is going to be looked at first. I know all the other students appreciate that, like, knowing that the bathrooms are, you know, getting attention. And even that one door and the two F hallway that Dr. Jaffers and I were talking about at Slack, it's getting attention. So it's nice to know the processes behind that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to add, I was kind of surprised that you're fully staffed. I have a lot of friends in the, in design and construction, and I keep hearing the problems of getting quality mechanics and personnel. And the fact that you're able to get fully staffed is a predicate on getting things done, work orders getting completed quicker and everything else. So appreciate your efforts on that.
And it's interesting, because we've been able to, to pick up folks who have vast experience in the trades, who are just tired of the rat race to, to DC and back, or Baltimore and back, and they, they, they live locally. They're going to bring a wealth of knowledge to St. Mary's County. And I, I think the benefits and the, the commute are playing a big role. And I think a lot of people aren't just looking at the, the dollar anymore. It's the whole, you know, it's the whole thing. So we, we lucked out. These are the last two that we filled. I, I feel like we've got really experienced folks that are, that are going to bring a lot of knowledge to our department.
Yeah, don't ever leave St. Mary's County. Nothing good ever comes from leaving the county. Just stay down here, work down here, live down here, stay in St. Mary's County.
Close the bridge.
Close the bridge. Right. Stay right here. That's it. Love it.
I have nothing. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative.
I could thank you and your department for many, many things that you do, because it would be difficult for us to have school without you. And you live your vision, committed to providing services and support of the learning environment, that ensures safe, comfortable, attractive, and well-maintained facilities for students, staff, and community. And you do that very well. So I, I want to just say thank you to your staff for the setup for commencement and all the work that goes into that. They have to set it up, then they have to break it down and take it to the next school and move it again. And I think they do a brilliant job with that. And some of them are on call twenty-four-seven. And I appreciate it, and I know the board does too, that we got new vehicles for them and new equipment. And some of this equipment make it easier to do their job, because they can do it more effectively and efficiently. And those are two words that keep coming up, that I can describe your department, effective and efficient and professional. So give the word back to them. I know, as well as the board members, appreciate all that they do.
Thank you.
Your turn.
Anyone else?
All right. Again, I, I have the, I have the privilege and pleasure every single Thursday to sit with Dr. Jaffers and all of the directors over in the Division of Supporting Services, and get a summary of their work in real time. And it is, it is a great group of professionals that relish the opportunity to be presented with a problem in need of a solution, because they will find it. You will, you, you absolutely positively find a way to get the work done. And you're creating, you've created a climate that draws others to you. And that's, you see that with being fully staffed out. People, people want to be part of something that matters and something that really is a great, a great environment. So, well done. Love it.
Thank you for the photos.
Sure.
Because the citizens get a chance also to see the amount of work that you do and the improvements. Thank you.
Well, especially when you travel around to different schools outside of our system in different counties and at sporting events, which I do, you can, you can clearly see the difference. So Mary, you're, you're "Live Your Vision." That's your new hashtag.
Yep, "Live Your Vision." That's great. Yeah.
That's right. Thank you.
All right. So with that, I have a motion.
I move that the Board of Education approved a twenty-twenty-three comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried, and we will come back with Ms. Leano with more stuff for Letty Marshall Dent.
Right. Because that's the other part. It's not only seeing the outside of the buildings, and seeing the playgrounds, and seeing the parking lots, and seeing the, but then going into the buildings and going from classroom to classroom, one of the greatest challenges is to make sure that the kids have furniture that is of this century. Because that is a very large lift. And I, I thank Ms. Leano for her attention to this.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here again for fun projects. Furniture is one of my passions. So I'm, I'm happy to present for Letty Marshall Dent for the systemic renovation that we just started this fall. It's early. I'm coming here to ask for furniture, but we will be providing furniture as we go with each phase. And having to midway of the first phase of clusters, then I realize, oh, I gotta order furniture. So here I am to request approval to award a contract to Duran Inc. in the amount of six hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred twenty-five and fourteen cents to provide, deliver, and install classroom and administrative office furnishing, as well as media center shelving, and seventy-eight thousand dollars in contingency for limited renovation at Letty Marshall Dent. A little bit of background, we have included in our budget for CIP for this project an amount for furniture replacement on this school. It is allocated over two years. And this is the first year that we are getting some state help to furnish furniture. Historically, it was always county, local funds that will do. But Ms. Howe had worked well with the IAC in trying to get the state to fund different things. Well, this is the first year. We don't even know how it works. We're learning as we go. So it will, basically, we'll present to them, back our contract award, just like we do for construction, and they'll give us an allocation. It's up to ten percent in their formula, but we put in a budget of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. It's typically an amount, a percentage based on construction that you want to spend on, on FFE and E. We will be buying furniture for the whole school, with the exception of the staff lounge, that their furniture is new. And I've visited the school. The staff bought it themselves, picked it up. It's in good shape, and they want to keep it. So we're going to work with the design we're doing in the staff lounge to incorporate what they already have. But basically, the whole admin area, the health suite, all those areas really needed help. The classrooms itself, desks and chairs were replaced, I'm going to say about five, six years ago. So in our numbers, it would not make sense to replace them now, but because we're getting the help of the state, we're going to do a whole package for the school. That way, we put them in a, in the same cycle of replacement for the whole entire school. And what we're going to do is, all those desks and chairs will be, put them in our inventory of used, and we'll use them for other schools when they need, you know, increase enrollment, or when they, something breaks. We don't have currently something for emergencies. So that's what, how we're gonna, we're gonna move. Added some layout of, so you understand what we're providing. It's basically similar to what we started doing with all the schools, especially Mechanicsville, that we did all the renovation. We take advantage to, you know, buy new cuts for the nurse and make it more compliance with the state requirements. And, and, and just add furniture, not, not just for classrooms, but to be able to work better and do all the meetings and the IAP and all the things that the whole school needs to provide for the students. I've added the high adjustment tables for every admin. I, I think it's a good feature ergonomically. I'm focused, just as, as much as I'm focused in ADA, I'm also focused on get, getting everybody more comfortable. Furnitures, they can produce more, work better, be happier. And, and, and we, we spend the majority of our time working. So there's several studies that are being out there, and furniture is something that evolves yearly, you know, because we learn how, we study how we work and how we sit. And it, it also, for kids, you know, that's where I started introducing that fitted chair and, and different soft seating for flexible learning and different things into our classrooms. Typical layout that I've shared before with you, desks, and then the kidney table and the cookie.
The cookie.
That a lot of teachers are, are liking it, because it gives them a podium for them to present, and they can move it around. And then we added the media center shelving. We, I, I added an example of what it will look in Mechanicsville. It really transformed that media center. With the interior, the perimeter walls will be fixed, but the interior ones are movable. So they can push them on the side when they have a book fair or any other event. They, they can rearrange that. The vendor that we are selecting is Duran. It's, we've used them quite, for the past years, quite often. They do provide a very good service to us. And they have a wide variety of vendors under them. They give us very good discounts, and they are, their customer service is superior. Their, the warrant is there. They, every time I come ask them, they come to the area, and so they're present with us. The contract that we will be piggybacking is the Mid-Atlantic Purchasing Team. It was issued by Howard County and expires this year, but it has two more options for renewing. So I'm assuming they will renew soon. And at this moment, I approve my recommendation. Is that the Board of Ed, of Education approved this agenda item as presented, and I am open for questions.
I just want to say thank you, because I, I'll die on the hill that the ambiance of where we learn is so important to keeping us really proud of where we learn and engaged and excited to learn. So this is really exciting. And I hope that the, the students will love, and that the administration will love having a good place to work and feel comfortable. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any residual value for the furniture that you're replacing?
For the, like I said and mentioned earlier before, for the classrooms, yes. So that's why we're going to put it in our, in our used inventory, and we're going to use it for other schools that need emergencies that we have in budget, or that need extra classrooms, you know. It's very hard to plan, because one year a school doesn't have, you know, three kindergartens, and then we get all these kindergartens, and then we have to, you know. So we are using that to provide furniture for the whole system.
That's all I have. Thank you.
No questions?
Thank you.
I'll have any.
Thank you. I appreciate your presentations and how you provide visuals, so we can see it, what it looks like, how it's going to fit, and the design of it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved the contract award to Duran Incorporated in the amount of six hundred fifty-six thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents to provide, deliver, and install furnishings for classroom and administrative offices and media center shelving, along with a contingency in the amount of seventy-eight thousand dollars for the limited renovation project at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, we are finished. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, October twenty-fifth, with executive session beginning at five, and the open meeting beginning at six. And we are finished.